Good evening. Today is Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. I am Heather Peckley, Clerk for the City of Manistee. The City Council's January 12th, 2021 Special Meeting and Work Session, being conducted remotely where all members of the City Council are in separate locations and not at the City Hall Council Chambers, will be called to order by Mayor Roger Zelinski shortly. As always, this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Manistee TV Cable Channels 189 and 190 and available at manistetv.org. City Council and City Staff will have video and audio available for this meeting and work session. Members of the public will be audio only. The microphones of all members of the City Council, City Manager, City Attorney and City Clerk will always be live unless there's an audio disruption. Mayor Zelinski, we are ready to proceed with the meeting.
Thank you, Heather. We'll call the meeting to order. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Here.
Councilmember Beaton?
Here.
Mayor Zelinski?
Here.
Councilmember Sipsick?
Here.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Here.
City Manager?
Here.
City Attorney?
Yeah.
Deputy Clerk?
Here.
City Assessor? She is here, but she's having a hard time with audio. I see her here. DPW Director?
Here.
Finance Director?
Here.
Police Chief?
Here.
Fire Chief?
Here.
City Engineer?
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Citizens' comments on agenda-related items. Each person in a virtual waiting room will be called individually by the City Clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's very important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we will move on to the next person in line. The meeting discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are: Consideration of Approval of Ordinance 20-07 Consideration of Municipal Services Agreement with Oceana County Housing Commission Manistee Limited Dividend Housing Association LP. We will now take public comments on the agenda items. Heather?
Okay. Please, if you're calling in, press *9 to raise your hand and then *6 to unmute when I call on you. Otherwise, I'll go through the list here. Telephone number 0319, do you have a comment?
No, I do not.
Thank you.
I do not.
Telephone number 1133, do you have a comment?
Yes, this is Tom Amor, Senior. I own the property at 443 Water Street. And just wanted to say that I was born in Manistee and reside in Manistee County all my life. We were 40 years at that site, operating our sign company. And I think it's the perfect use for that site because of its proximity to downtown. My mother, many years ago, was called the Hat Lady. She never drove, except once when she took driver training and crashed into a car. But she, at one point, lived at Horizon Point. And she would, she walked everywhere and she would walk Olson's to get her groceries because that was before Family Fair was there. And she would love to have been this close to downtown. We also have a, our company is 75 years this year in Manistee. And we've had challenges getting employees. And when we, we had two of them that were going to come from out of Manistee and ultimately refused the position because they couldn't find adequate housing. I own a few rentals and I always have a waiting list. So I think that the facility would be a real complement to downtown and serve Manistee as a city at very well. And that's all.
Thank you. Telephone number 5355, do you have a comment? Or telephone number 3999, do you have a comment? Mayor, I think that is all we have for public comment.
Thank you, Heather. New business: Consideration of the Approval of Ordinance 21-07. Oceana County Housing Commission Limited Dividend Housing Association LP would like Council to consider a 4% payment in lieu of taxes so they can pursue Michigan State Housing Development Authority tax credit to assist in financing their senior and workforce housing project. As an ordinance, two separate readings are required. If this ordinance is introduced at this time, it could be adopted at the next regular meeting. At this time, Council could take action to introduce Ordinance 21-07. Is there a motion?
Should I make that motion, Bachman?
Who was the second? I'm sorry, Mayor.
I don't, I haven't heard a second.
Well, either one of us.
Yeah, either I or Mr. Bachman could be second.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion?
May I have a comment on this, if I could?
Go ahead.
I thought about this a lot, particularly when Jermaine made a comment last week about how we're so desperate to get a project going down there and want to pause it. So I really gave a lot of thought to it and, you know, I looked at it. A lot of people think this is Section 8 housing, which it is absolutely not Section 8 housing. We also added the workforce portion to accommodate some other requests, which I'm very happy to see. It's not on River Street, as some people have said. It's on Water Street and Pine. There's a small piece of it on River Street. I personally think it's a very complimentary piece for that project. I know of no one else who's asked to go there, no other product pending for there. Although Mr. Ficano thought we should hold off and wait for someone else to come there. I think a project of this magnitude and bringing people downtown is a good fit for that piece of property and I'm going to support it.
This is Mr. Schmansky. Oh. Go ahead, Linda.
I just wanted to add that I'm just looking at that workforce housing piece more as student housing as well. I'm just so delighted that it's so walkable to the new extension campus for West Shore Community College. And I really want to see great use come from it. So I've heard from both sides of it. I'm happy that the seniors are getting some of it. I know you won't give up on the Monroe cottages. You're still going to pursue that. And that's, that would be excellent to have that developed too for the seniors. But I think this is a great fit. I'm, I do like this project. I'm sorry, it's your turn.
Thanks. I, yeah, I, again, I agree with Mr. Bachman and Ms. Beaton. This is a great project for us for a number of reasons. If you happen to sit into the world's longest Zoom meeting during the planning commission, you would have heard the excellent briefings given by the people who are developing this property. And one of the things that I noted was the fact that they are going to restore one of the oldest buildings in Manistee and the oldest building on River Street, one of the oldest wood-framed buildings in Manistee to as close to original conditions as possible, working with the historic section of the DDA. So I think this is truly going to be a wonderful addition to the city. It's going to bring back a building that has, you know, been, you know, nearly abandoned for as long as I can remember. So again, compliments to the developers and the chamber and everyone involved with bringing this project forward for Manistee.
Is there anybody else?
Yeah, can you guys hear me? Because everybody's frozen.
There's a bad echo.
Okay, does that work?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to add that I'm not against senior housing or the workforce housing or whatever we're going to call it. My concerns are with the location and the speed at which we're pushing this through. I feel like something's going to get missed and there's information that's not... I just feel like it's not, they're not being forthcoming with something. I don't know what it is and I hope for the city's sake that I'm wrong. I honestly do, but I can't in good conscience support this with how fast it's moving through and it's switched from senior housing to multifamily to workforce. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that. That's all I wanted to say.
Is there anybody else? Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. We're only discussing the pilot, not the project, correct?
Correct. Mr. Taylor, is that correct?
You're muted.
That's correct. You're only discussing the pilot at this time.
Thank you. Martin Pontiac, do you have anything further?
No, that's it. I just didn't confuse because we're talking about location and everything like that. But we're just talking about the pilot. So I just wanted to make sure that's correct.
Anybody else?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
No.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
You're muted.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Consideration of Municipal Services Agreement with Oceana County Housing Commission Manistee Limited Dividend Housing Association LP. Oceana County Housing Commission Manistee Limited Dividend Housing Association LP desires a municipal services agreement to provide ongoing funding to the city to assist in the continuing enhancement and improvement of its various public services related to public health and safety. At this time, Council could take action to approve the Municipal Services Agreement and authorize the Maryland City Clerk to sign the agreement. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
A motion and a second and discussion. No discussion, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaton?
Yes.
Mayor Zelinski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sipsick?
I don't see her.
I think she might have dropped off. I'll, oh, somebody's coming in. Let me see if this is her. I don't know if that's her number. I'm trying to unmute her, but I don't know if it's her. I don't think it is because they won't let me unmute them. So I think she dropped off. Okay. Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski?
Yes.
No.
I'm sorry?
Who had someone, who said no? I said yes.
Yes, okay. Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Mr. Sailor? Do we have any issue with the one council member dropping off?
I don't see any issue, Mayor, especially considering all other council members who voted with constituent majority anyway.
She is back in the meeting. If you, I think she just got back in.
I'm sorry.
Okay, are you back?
Yeah.
Should we ask her again, George?
Yeah, I just repeat the motion, I think, and then you can take her vote.
Okay, there's a motion made by Martin Pontiac, seconded by Beaton, to approve the Municipal Services Agreement and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the agreement. Councilmember Sipsick, do you approve or disapprove? I'm sorry. I didn't catch that.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I believe the motion carried. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Concerns and comments. Citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities or area of city involvement. Citizens in attendance via phone shall be recognized by the city clerk for comments. Limited to five minutes, letters submitted to Council will not be read. Each person in a virtual waiting room will be called by the last four digits of their telephone number. Heather?
Okay, we're going to try this again. Can you, if you would like to make a comment, please press *9 on your telephone to raise your hand. And then you will hit *6 to unmute. One more time, if you have a comment, please press *6 to unmute yourself. Seeing and hearing none?
Want to move on to officials and staff and council members, Heather, please?
Sure. City Manager?
Nothing at this time.
City Attorney?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
DPW Director?
Nothing at this time.
Finance Director?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Police Chief?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Fire Chief?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
City Engineer?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Bachman?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
Councilmember Beaton?
Nothing, Heather.
Councilmember Sipsick?
I got booted again. I'm just taking a walk, I'm sorry.
No, do you have a comment for, any comments right now? Or council comment?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay, um, where am I? Sorry. Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Nothing at this time.
Mayor Protem Schmansky?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
I think I skipped. Councilmember Grabowski?
Nothing, Heather, thank you.
And Mayor Zelinski?
Nothing, Heather. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, Grabowski. Second, Schmansky.
Have a motion and a second. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. You want to move right out of the work session, Heather?
Yes, and we can proceed with the work session.
I'll call the meeting to order. Work session items, public comments on work session-related items. Each person in the waiting, the virtual waiting room will be called individually by the city clerk by the last four digits of their telephone number. Individuals will be asked if they have a comment or if they are passing. It's important that those giving comments have a good phone connection and no sound or noise in the background. Otherwise, there will be a disruptive audio. If the issue cannot be corrected by the caller, we'll move on to the next person in line. The work session discussion topics for those who do not have an agenda are: Disc golf, tree removal due to sewer issues, and sidewalk improvement programs. We'll now take public comments.
Okay, if you have a comment, press *9. I will move through the list real quick here though to see if I have anyone. Telephone number 0319, do you have a comment?
Do not.
Oh, let's see here. Telephone number 3999, do you have a comment? Telephone number ending in 5355, do you have a comment?
I'm not sure if I was the right one. Mine was 3999.
Do you have a comment?
Just been working with Tom Ole on the disc golf course.
Can you please state your name and address, please, for the record?
Name is Jim Schultz. I'm in Paw Paw, Michigan. But I have a home in Ludington and I've been active in the disc golf community for 25 years and excited about the possibilities of a disc golf course in Manistee.
Thank you. Telephone number ending in 5355, if you have a comment, please press *6. Telephone number 5722, if you have a comment, please press *6. And last, telephone number 7447, please press *6 if you have a comment. Hearing none? Mayor, we're ready to move on.
Thank you. Discussion on disc golf. Tom, are you ready?
Yes, sir, I am ready. Heather, if you could share the screen, that would be awesome. Thank you so much.
Oh, yes, let me, one second.
Sure.
Good haveability now.
All right, let me see here. How does that look?
Yep.
All right, let me do this. Let me get to this. All right, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. I'm Tom Ole. I am the Vice Chair of the Manistee Parks Commission. I'm also Parks Ranger for the Mason County Parks Campground and Disc Golf Courses just south of the city. I believe Tim O'Connor is with us as well, the Manistee Parks Commission Chairman, as well as Jeff McCula from the Department of Public Works. So this is the Manistee Disc Golf Project. It's a true collaboration between these three departments. And to give you a little history on this, we started about a year ago discussing disc golf in Manistee. It started with Red Sumerick Park over on Fifth Avenue and what we can do with that. We started to talk about that, but that was the last meeting we had before COVID came and we stopped a meeting. So that project got put on hold for just a little bit. And then the very first meeting we had, again, I believe it was in August, once we finally could meet, we were going to talk about disc golf, but we had kind of a great little unexpected visitor to one of our commission meetings, a local member who had just moved to the area. And as a disc golfer, he kind of started on his own getting disc golf going in the public mindset. He went to the media, had a couple of events, and then he came to our parks meeting. And from that point on, we knew we kind of had something going. So we created an ad hoc committee to kind of explore disc golf in the area. And from that point on, this project just kind of took on a life of its own and that's kind of where we are today. So this is the Manistee Disc Golf Project. So a lot of you are asking probably, what is disc golf? It's a very valid question. It's a really inexpensive outdoor activity and it is accessible to all ranges of ages and abilities. And I mean, you see two-year-olds, three-year-olds playing all the way to 102 years old. And the great thing about disc golf is you can go out and have fun without even knowing how to play or you can be on that extreme level of being a professional. It's just one of those sports where you can just play and not worry about how good you are or you can worry about how good you are. It's played similar to ball golf. So if you know how ball golf is played, same concept. You start at a tee, you try to get to a hole, you have the least amount of strokes and you keep score along the way. The main difference is, instead of the expensive equipment of golf, you're using soft discs, disc golf discs. Or if you don't have one, you can just use a frisbee. It really doesn't matter. You see beginners out there with a $5 disc. You see professionals out there with $50 discs. It's, like I said, it's this whole range of availability to play the sport. Excuse me. It is one of the top growing outdoors activities in America right now. And especially with the pandemic, it kind of just lent its ability to play outside alone or in a small group to being able to go out and not worry about what's happening with COVID in the outdoor park system. So it's actually really taken off over the past year. And if you look at the public courses across America right now, there are 5,000 plus of them and that number is growing exponentially. For example, Kingsley, Michigan, it's about 30 miles south of Traverse City. It is due east of us and then up a little bit. They had a city park in their park probably for the past 15 years. And this past, I would say, in the spring, they put a professional park in there for the whole community. So you're seeing little communities understand what a viable outdoor activity solution this is for their park system. The great thing about disc golf, unlike ball golf, where you kind of have a specified area to play and it kind of, you know, has to be nice, you have to have lots of acres for ball golf. Disc golf can be created on a wide variety of landscapes. You can have it on sand, you can have it in the woods, you can have it in a city park. You can have it on 200 acres and have multiple, multiple courses on it. So where you put a disc golf course, it's, it all is dependent on your imagination. So why disc golf? Well, like I said, it's low cost. When you look at what actually goes into a park, you have baskets, you have tee pads made of cement and then you have whatever you want to add to it. So there really isn't a whole lot of equipment that needs to be supplied to create this activity in a park. And the maintenance on it is extremely low. Natural footpath traffic, if it's in a city park, like we're kind of aiming to do, that park's already taken care of, being mowed and such. And it's a city park. The whole community is going to be involved in it. It's going to be right in front of their face and they're going to know, hey, what is this thing? Let's get involved with this. It's disc golf. Like I said, when, once you get a disc golf course into a city park, it kind of creates a new aesthetic as well. You see more activities in areas that you previously weren't using. A great example of this is about, I would say about a decade ago, I was involved with the Milwaukee County Disc Golf Association and they had a city park just north of the city of Milwaukee called Estabrook Park. And if you know Milwaukee at all, their park system is pretty well-known. It's a great park system. And this one park north of the city was kind of taken over by dereliction and just kind of elicited illegal activity and it just kind of became an outcast. And the disc golf community saw the potential in this park. And over the course of a couple of years, they put this great city park in, got people that had never visited that park to come to that park. And because there was more people in that park and more eyes on that park, that park just took off. And as of right now, as of today, that park is clean. The city put in a beer garden, they put a skate park, skate park garden in there. They put soccer courts in that park that was, were never there. It just really changed that park to make it really viable for that city again. And I kind of foresee that happening with some of the parks that we have around here as well. I mentioned it's pandemic-proof. It's one of the few outdoor activities you can put into your community that people are going to travel to. If you look at tennis, people really don't necessarily travel to another city to go to another tennis court or they don't necessarily drive to another city to play basketball on a basketball court. Disc golf is one of those activities where people will drive 20 miles, 30 miles, 50 miles, 60 miles. So it brings people from outside our community into our community as well. I mentioned it's family. You can take your whole family out from a... I mentioned it's family. You can take your whole family out, from a young child to a elderly. You can play in a group, or you can play solo. That's, that's the real beauty of disc golf. So why Manistee? Why are we talking about the Manistee Disc Golf Project in our quaint little city here? If you know disc golf in West Michigan, it has become a true national tourist destination. And that's not even an understatement. Right now, Luddington has six courses. They have three great courses south of the city, which I'm a park ranger for. They have a course in Scottville. West Shore Community has an amazing long course. And they had a true professional course, which is nationally rated in the school forest off of Jabavi. And that one's kind of being renovated because a middle school went into that school forest, and it kind of, it kind of changed the dynamic of that course. But they are actually redesigning that in collaboration with the school system. So it's kind of intertwined with the community. And Jim Schultz, who's going to be with us and already spoke a little bit, he's redesigning that course. And he could probably give you more information on that as well. But the one thing that's truly missing, missing in West Michigan, which we, which we want to focus on right off the bat, is that family youth-oriented course, something for everybody. And when I say there's a lack of that in the area, even though there's multiple disc golf courses in the area, this would be a smaller course, meaning that the courses you travel to Traverse City to or Luddington, they average like three hundred and sixty feet, four hundred feet. And when you have a five-year-old and a six-year-old or a ten-year-old, they kind of get bored with that, that lengthy course that can sometimes extend to about a two-mile walk. Whereas a true family course, we really don't have one anywhere for anybody. And especially for a beginning project like this, this is just a true way to get the youth involved, to get the community involved, and give them that taste for disc golf, as well as giving them an activity in a park, which is kind of underutilized in some of the areas that we'll point to here real fast. Like I said, we have available park system land that's currently underutilized. We have a community yearning for disc golf, which I mentioned. The more we talk about this, the more it's in the media, the more I have people come to me saying, yeah, this is, this is the perfect place for it, because Manistee is just this void of non-disc golf-related activities as, as people travel to Luddington or people travel to Traverse City. Also, I know them, yes?
Excuse me, Mr. Mr. Ollie, your slides are not changing. Are you going through those?
I am, but everything's, everything's static until I switch over to the next slide.
Okay, just making sure, because nothing was moving. Sorry to interrupt.
That's fine, that's fine. And then this is a perfect activity that kind of fits in with the expansion of the new businesses that are coming into the city. We've kind of welcomed the marijuana business into the city, and if you take a look back at disc golf history, it kind of started in the seventies and kind of that hippie mentality. And it's kind of mutated into a family activity. But these new businesses really kind of welcome the disc golf community. It kind of goes hand in hand. So that kind of lends to the expansions, expansion of all the new businesses that are coming in to this great city of ours here. So what are the costs? The baskets are kind of the main thing that we'll be buying, that kind of make up what a disc golf course is. And as I mentioned, Jim Schultz, he's a pro disc golfer. He's out of Luddington. He's a world champion. He's a course designer across the country. He's, he's helped us out in the fruition of this project. He works for Eagle Wings Disc Golf. An amazing organization. If you get a chance, definitely click on this link with this PDF that we can send out to everybody. But the baskets roughly cost about four hundred dollars a basket, about eighteen holes, seventy-two hundred dollars. Sinage, like I said, it could be between fifteen hundred dollars and three thousand dollars, depending on the style and company. But once this started hitting the paper, and once people started realizing that we have this concept of a disc golf project in Manistee, I had a bunch of volunteers come to us and said they'd be willing to make these signs. They'd be willing to help out, you know, supplying the materials. So that's where that volunteer system comes into play with disc golf, that you see a lot of materials. Besides the basket and signs, you're looking at cement for tee pads, kind of price that out, about twenty-eight hundred dollars. The wood poles, the wood chips, Jeff at Department of Public Works said he'd be able to supply some wood poles. And wood chips are just a byproduct of a city cleaning up some of the trees and branches around here. The maintenance I mentioned before, Moines already part of the park routine, and volunteers are coming out right now, and they really want to help. I talked to Dylan Walker, who's part of the J.C.'s, and he wants to get the J.C.'s on board and help us out with this as well.
Tom?
Yes?
We still have the very first slide showing. I wonder if you can unshare your screen and maybe share it again? Because I think it's important if the council falls along. Oh, that just moved.
The very first screen was the only one that ended up showing through all that?
Yeah.
Ah, gotcha. Let's see here.
They're starting to move now.
Did that one move?
What is disc golf is what's up.
Did that one switch?
Not yet.
Why is disc golf?
Yep.
So they're starting to move now.
So you thought, no, that's fine. You probably thought I was doing that off of memory. How about this one? What are the costs?
Yes.
All right. Sorry about that, guys. Feel free to interrupt at any time. I really want this to be interactive. So if you have a question, please feel free to interrupt here. So let's do this. Maybe I'll leave it like this so you can see this. How's that? Can you see the proposed layout now?
Yes.
All right. So let me do this. How's that for the proposed layout for everybody?
It's better.
All right. So this is the First Street Lighthouse Park, park that we initially decided, let's take a look at this underutilized property. And if you're unfamiliar with First Street Lighthouse Park, it's just off the First Street Beach, right off of Cherry Road. You got the parking lot over here. Can you see my mouse moving at least, guys?
Yes.
Thank you. So we have three parking spots, well, actually four. You got one here, you got one here, you got one here, you got one over by the dog park. And we walked the park, a couple of us from the commission, the gentleman from Bring Disc Golf to Manistee walked with us. Mr. McCula walked with us, and we end up walking this whole park, and we were able to put in eighteen holes. And mind you, this is just the alpha process, meaning that these are the places that we really like the holes, but they can be moved based on concerns or based on, you know, future plans. So what you're looking at, you're looking at hole one, kind of going all the way around. And then we're kind of walking behind the dog park, and we're going to have two baskets that are close to the beach in this unused property up in here. And then kind of work our way back around to the parking lot over by the Lighthouse Park Playground. Some things you're going to see in the next slide is one of the things we really wanted to do before we even started talking about disc golf. This came up in the Parks Commission, and it's, it's pretty low, I imagine, on, on the list of the Parks Department. Just one of those things we all kind of lived with, but we figured if we could get volunteers in here and clean up these areas that are labeled A, B, and C, this is going to help out the park no matter what. So this was our first thing that we wanted to do, and we actually started to clean up B and A right before the snow fell. And let me, let me jump back to the slides and show you here. Can you see fall cleanup on the slides?
Yes.
All right. So as you see, a lot of those areas, A, B, and C, they were really overgrown with a lot of dead wood. That's just been, just been kind of growing out of hand, a lot of vines and everything. Our first volunteer little meeting, we ended up going up by the playground at Lighthouse Park and clearing all this out. So if you go up there, you now see paths that were kind of overgrown, and from the Lighthouse Park area, you can actually see Lake Michigan, which you couldn't see before. So this is our plan to do that with the entire A, B, and C areas of the disc golf park here. Let's do this. And this will give you an idea of what the concept is of the course that we would love to put in, a little family course. These are the tee pads, little cement tee pads. We would love to build a little lighthouse. This picture right here, if you go ninety miles straight across the lake to Manitowoc, that's Lake Michigan. That's a lighthouse they built for their little city park. So literally, that's straight across from us, kind of cool. Wood chips, this is what the city would provide. There's one of the baskets. And then these are the little obstacles we would create. These are light poles that they use. In this case, this is used down in Charlotte, I believe, at one of the bigger tournaments. But we would like to do this up here, and what Mr. McCula had an idea of, and it's a great idea, is we have marine pilings available to us that are left over. And that would just create that aesthetic of a maritime disc golf course within that Lighthouse Park itself. So like, if you go back to what I was talking about aesthetics, this would be the aesthetic of that course. So moving forward. Ideas, improvements, input, concerns, this would be the interactive part. If you guys would love to ask questions, I've got Tim O'Connor here, the chair. I've got Jeff here from Department of Public Works, and as you heard, Jim Schultz, the designer, is with us as well. So if you have any questions whatsoever, feel free to ask us right now.
Council, do you have any questions?
This is Mick Schumansky. So exactly what are you looking for from the city other than the use of the land?
From, for this, from the city itself, it'd be from the Department of Public Works. Somebody's got some volume on there. So from the city, we were being looking at wood chips, which are already made through breaking up branches and trees. We would be looking at those poles, which I believe are already set to the side, those maritime poles. The maintenance would be part of city routine anyway, the land use. And also probably promotion, you know, this is definitely one, this is definitely going to be a community project. I want everyone to kind of take ownership of this and have this as the springboard to possible more courses around the area. We kind of have a future plan. If you look on this slide a little bit, we have future plans of maybe expanding this to possibly get a professional course in somewhere. Maybe over on the M-55 property that we have just to the east of the city. So materials from the city, like I said, wood chips, wood chips, the wood poles, and the maintenance itself, and the land use.
So if I can add to that, Mayor Protem Schumansky, this is Jeff McCula. I think that this is a very low impact. And I hate to use the term as a negative, but it's, but it's, it's not a permanent asset into the park system. So if, you know, if the trend ever changed someday, it, it's not like we're occupying the park with something extremely permanent. What we, what I have pledged to them is, as this goes forward, they, the Parks Commission and this ad hoc committee has kind of pledged to do fundraising on the city's behalf to find the money for the materials and the signage. And then I think what the, what I'd be willing to provide is the, the wood chips that come out of our normal chipping processes in the city. It actually would be somewhat of a cost savings, because we didn't have to haul it out to our compost site. The pilings that Tom is referring to are pilings that we salvaged from the Marina. When the Marina project and the docks were redone, we saved all the pilings from that. And I think that would be a good reuse, and we'd be happy to reset those. And then the concrete pads that are used for the tee boxes, that's something that I can do in-house pouring that concrete. And they haven't asked anything from a budget perspective at this point. So it's something that we can provide to them with just in-kind and, and in-house services.
Well, my initial feeling is that this would be great for the park. I, I can't see any negatives at all. I was just curious if there was additional funding requirements that we would need to work into the budget. But it looks like this is pretty much utilizing existing resources, and the fundraising would be part of the association. So I have no objections to it at all. I think it would be a good asset, and I support it and would probably support the fundraising.
Yeah, and if, if we have to supplement some of the funding for that, that would come out of this budget cycle. So, you know, when we present the budget to council in March, April, you would certainly know, but that's, that's currently not the plan.
Okay, back here, Ted, would this be something that you could request some money from Revenue Sharing Board? Maybe you have the funding for that?
Duff, you want to answer that?
Perhaps it could be Revenue Sharing Board. I'd have to look into it a little further to see if it met, met their criteria.
It could be a better candidate for the Minger Foundation grant. That's something that we could look into, especially since the, the overall costs are so low. And members of the Parks Commission have also been researching other grant opportunities that could be out there. So part of this presentation is to make council aware of what's going on. And also to get your blessing that if we, we do find some grant opportunities, that we can apply for those, and then also, you know, for a raise of money, we, we need to do that with council being fully aware of that.
The council have any objections to moving forward with this project?
I have no objections.
I don't hear any objections. Mr. Taylor, how should we move forward with this?
I think probably the, the best path forward is, is we'll bring it up to the next council meeting just for formal approval. So we do have it in the record that has approved this group to raise funds on behalf of the city and explore grant opportunities. That way, there's no misunderstanding.
Oh, it's good to me.
Mayor?
You have any? Go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think it's really important to understand that there have been articles that have been in the paper about disc golf and fundraising. And Tom mentioned this early on, but, but the Parks Commission and this group has not done any fundraising, any organized events. Those efforts were being done kind of on a private, in a private group, and certainly they've been welcome to participate in this process. But the Parks Commission wanted to make sure that they followed all the processes to make this, you know, kick off as a very successful project.
Anybody else have any comments? Tom, thank you for your presentation. It looks like it's, it's going to be a go. I'm looking forward to it. I might even try it.
I hope so, Mayor. Thank you guys very much.
Moving on, discussion on tree removal, four issues, Mayor Protem Schumansky.
So, you know, the reason I bring this up is I, over the last couple of years, I've had several people in the city complain and comment that the trees that are growing in front of their homes are causing major problems with their sewer systems, some of them with their foundations, with their sidewalks. And when they go and, or when they've gone to the, the Tree Commission in the past, they've been told that unless the tree is diseased, it can't come down, period. And it seems to me that's a little bit draconian. I mean, if we have, you know, a tree that's causing damage to the home that it's in front of, we, we should at least have some serious consideration and at least look at the concerns and the complaints. The most recent one, there is a popular, a poplar tree that's on the adjacent to their property in the right-of-way. And this will be the second time that they've had to replace their sewer system, because the poplar tree apparently is very aggressive with its root system, and it keeps just tearing up what they've done. And from what I understand, Forbes even recommended that the only way that they could basically protect themselves against further damage would be to have that particular tree removed. So, you know, again, all, all I'm suggesting is that, that we at least amend the, the Tree Commission so that they can at least look at other concerns for trees other than just disease and weigh into considerations for the type of tree. And, you know, again, you know, the amount of damage that it may be doing to personal or public property, for that matter. Has anybody brought this problem up to Mr. McCula? I, I know that it's been mentioned to Mr. McCula. I, you know, again, Mr. McCula, do you want to chime in?
Well, I certainly understand the, the concerns. From my perspective, that's a lot. that's a lot, that's treating the symptoms and not the problem. The, the, well, basically if the roots are getting into those pipes, it means that there's gaps in the pipes or in the joints that are allowing the roots to penetrate those. And eliminating the tree will make the roots go away, but it doesn't eliminate the fact that the sewer laterals are old, damaged, cracked, have open joints. And obviously the city has been working for forty, fifty years to remove inflow and infiltration to eliminate our, our sewer overflows. And what we've been able to determine to this point is that most of the water that's getting into the system right now is coming from private laterals that have cracks and open joints and are allowing water into them. So removing the trees doesn't help replace those hundred-year-old pipes. And I think, I think it's far better to remove, or I'm sorry, to upgrade those pipes. You know, than to deforest the, the city streets. The trees are, are a wonderful part of our society, but they also have a lot of maintenance issues that come with them. Obviously we spend five weeks every year just picking up the leaves from them. We have a program where we pick up and chip brush on a weekly basis. And, and those trees also cause issues in the city sewer system as well. And as you're aware, in the past two and a half years, we've spent $5 million to line those pipes and, and upgrade those.
So, you know, again, just from what I understand, the, at least in this one particular instance, two years ago, they did have their sewer repaired and, or, and/or replaced. I don't know to what extent, but to the amount of a couple of thousand dollars. And again, within a couple of years, the problem came back again. And that's when Forbes basically said, well, you know, again, you're going to have to replace what we did prior because the root systems are so aggressive that they're basically breaking what we're doing. I, I can't verify that with Forbes. I've not talked to them. I had asked the homeowner if they could send me what Forbes had, had said, but I have not received anything. But it sounds like it, it's not just old. I know that, you know, the home I'm in, I, I believe the, the laterals were replaced within 10 years. And I have my sewers routed out, you know, every year to make sure that they run free and run clean. But again, I, I'm just, I just think that we want to make sure that the tree commission is not just so singly focused that they are not taking into account other factors that may, you know, be important to homeowners in the city.
Yeah. And I do know that whenever we've got a request to remove a tree, the, we sign that request to the tree commission within the right of way. And I, I didn't pull up their guidelines, but I believe their guidelines are really tree first. And so if there's damage to the tree, they look first to see if it can be trimmed and saved. And then only when it's diseased or, or severely damaged will they recommend removal of that tree.
Well, I have a comment. I, I did have, Mr. Schumansky, I did have Forbes over to my house to clean roots out of my sewer just this past week. I have replaced a lateral two or three years ago, and even after replacing the lateral with plastic, I'm still having issues in, in my sewer line. And it's because they'll still continue to grow for quite some time inside the sewer line, even after replacing that lateral. I don't know what the, what the answer is, except, you know, my research tells me that these roots will extend 100 feet or more beyond the tree canopy. How many trees do you have to remove to really solve the issue? I'm not sure. And now I'm even questioning replacing the lateral if that solved the issue. Forbes assured me that after a few years they'll quit growing. I sure hope he's right. Any other comments? Mr. Schumansky, are you hoping to change the tree commission guidelines?
Well, that's my suggestion is that we, we add some criteria that at least can, that a homeowner can make a, a case or a presentation to the tree commission for a tree removal other than for disease.
Any council members have any comments on that?
Well, I think they should be able to go to a, to the tree commission and present something just to give them an idea if they're having problems like that. I took down three trees by my house from popple trees and that's not my problem.
No, I think it's a good idea to add some language. And I think I have a feeling this is going to also lead to the second topic about the sidewalks. Is that correct, Mr. Schumansky?
Well, I, I think in some cases that is part of it.
How do you propose we move forward with this, changing the tree commission by guidelines?
I do believe Jeff's a city liaison to that committee. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
I, I would ask him to convene a meeting of the tree commission, share the concerns that he's heard here tonight and ask them how they could allow at least a resident to petition them or to do something. And then they would be decided, be looked at on a case-by-case basis with no guarantees.
That sounds good. Everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
I would just add from my perspective that if a person can come forward with enough evidence that the tree is really causing the problem, there should be, there should be a way for them to be heard at the tree commission. So anything further on the subject? Very now we'll move on to the sidewalk issue. Mayor Protem.
Okay. Again, my, my concern with the sidewalks is that actually there, there are several issues. You know, obviously we have areas where the trees have, have basically pushed the sidewalks up and out of alignment so that pedestrians literally have a difficult time navigating the sidewalk, but that's only part of it. We have areas in Manistee where the sidewalks are almost impassable because of grass and the sides growing in bushes have grown into the point where they've overgrown the sidewalk by half. The weeds and things have overtaken the sidewalk and literally encroached it. So you really can't even find concrete in places where I'm sure there's sidewalk underneath them. And, and in other cases, you know, we have so many cracks and broken edges on the sidewalk that it becomes very difficult for, for people to, to navigate them, especially if you are at all handicap. You know, again, our runners, if you notice people who run or walk, they're more likely to be in the street than on the sidewalks, anywhere in Manistee. And then my latest issue with sidewalks is during the winter time, you know, the people plow the side or plow their snow and basically use the sidewalks for their dumping grounds. You know, a couple of our, you know, again, I hate to say it, but a couple of our churches plow all their church parking lots, snow onto the sidewalks, which makes a great playground, by the way, for kids. I've got some good photographs of where the kids have now built snow forts across the sidewalks where they've mounted the snow to seven or eight foot high. But it does kind of impede you from getting across if you do want to walk on the sidewalk. The same thing goes for cars parking across them or boats being parked across the parking lot. You know, we basically have very little rules, it seems, when it goes to right of way for pedestrians on a sidewalk in Manistee. So part of what I thought was that if we could treat sidewalks somewhat like we do our roads, where, you know, Mr. McCula and Public Works have done an amazingly thorough job of basically looking at all of the streets in Manistee and making a, a, a very detailed effort to repair, replace and maintain the streets. What I would ask for is that our sidewalks be put under the same kind of scrutiny so that we would have that kind of visibility on our sidewalks. And in many cases, I think, you know, the condition of the sidewalk is, is lends to blight. If it looks like the sidewalks are abandoned, it certainly doesn't lend a warm and fuzzy feeling to somebody going into buying a home in that neighborhood.
Mr. Taylor, how does our city ordinance apply to this issue?
Well, certainly you can't park across a sidewalk. You know, that's one thing. You can't pile snow on the sidewalk either. So those are issues that we can address through enforcement. In terms of some kind of a, an asset management plan for the sidewalks, we don't have that per se in place. I know Jeff trying, tries to do what he can with what budget he has to attend to sidewalks and tries to split it between taking care of trip hazards and replacing sections of damaged sidewalk. But he's got very little funds to, to work with. So we do have some things we can do. It depends on what council wants us to do.
I've been under the impression that I have some responsibility as a homeowner to this, my sidewalk that's in front of my property.
You do.
And that, does that include maintaining?
Jeff?
Yeah, the, the current ordinance, and we discussed this with city council probably within the last year or two, when it was discussed about sidewalks downtown, actually. The current ordinance requires the adjoining property owner to maintain the sidewalks adjacent to their property. And that main, maintenance would fall into edging. It would follow, it would include snow removal. But it also specifically says you have a very short timeframe of when the city manager notifies you that your, your sidewalk is in disrepair or cracked or heaved or whatever to affect those repairs. Otherwise the city could affect those repairs and charge you back for it. When we discussed this with council, and again, I don't know the exact timeframe, but say within the last year or two, there wasn't any, any movement to change that. And what we, what I reviewed with council is what the Public Works is doing kind of in spite of that ordinance. As you're aware that we've been going around the city and we've been trying to remove trip hazards. That's, that's my phase one is getting rid of all the trip hazards. My second phase would be to replace sidewalks that are broken and cracked in, in our, in disrepair. And then the third phase would be to fill in the gaps where sidewalks start and stop and there's gaps in between those. So would it be okay if I shared my screen for a second?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Well, I hit shared screen and oh.
You should be able to.
Did that work?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the blue crosshatched area, our areas where we have had our contractor go through and saw cut the trip hazards. And then the public works staff has followed back through those same areas and completely replaced all the trip hazards that couldn't be saw cut. And where you see my mouse here, where the two red areas are, there's basically, it's the west side of Maple Street and Cherry Street. Our saw cutting contractor this year went through that area and there's really not many sidewalks up in, around the Jefferson School area. We pretty much have, I'll say 90% of the trip hazards completed on the, on the north side and then on the south side of the river, west of Maple Street. So we've got a little bit more to do down in here. But then the next section that we'll be attacking will be from basically River Street between Maple and US 31 and heading down through this swath, what we call the center section. And then we'll be starting to work on east of US 31 and going through that area. That's what we've been able to accomplish in the last five years. And I think we've had a massive impact. We used to probably improve about 60 trip hazards a year and, and we're up in the four to 500 a year right now. And that's, that's on top of what the, you know, what the, what the ordinance requires the property owners to do. One of the, the challenges and one of the reasons why we did this program was because in past years, we would jump around to where people requested and where we verified that there were problems. But that becomes very inefficient. So what we're trying to do is we're, we're taking the Act 51 money that we get for non-motorized purposes and we're trying to put it to the best benefit of the community. And by systematically going street by street, block, block by block and trying to eliminate those trip hazards, I think we're having a much bigger impact.
Mr. McCula, what obligation do I have to the sidewalk in front of my house? If, I'll give you an example. If I want to replace the sidewalk, would the city be of any help? Replace it?
According to the ordinance, the responsibility is solely yours. If, if, if you contacted the Public Works and said, you know what, my sidewalks are really bad. Cause we've had a lot of residents that have said, well, I'd be willing to participate in a portion of the cost. Certainly we go through and explain, well, actually it's really a hundred percent your cost. But what, you know, we just had one last, or last week that has a, a section that's really bad, wanted to participate in the cost. And we've got a road project coming up adjacent to, to that, that we're able to slide, slide that in. You know, so we're trying to help people out wherever we can. We've had a few really bad instances. And if I pulled that screen back up, there were three spotted places on the east side of town where we were forced to do some, some upgrades because of an insurance issue or, or an accident or something like that. And when we've done that, I'll make sure that we replace a whole, enough trip hazards around that so that it takes up a full truckload of concrete. Cause I don't want, you know, the crews and the materials to have to go skipping around.
So if memory serves me correctly, we were doing, we were replacing sidewalks a few years ago, or maybe we're still doing it, sections of sidewalk. I'm not familiar with the resident having to pay anything. Were we just doing that at no cost of the owner?
The stuff that I'm doing now, we, we're spending about $20,000 a year to upgrade sidewalks and we don't require, we don't require any residents contribute to that. Even though the ordinance says that's a hundred percent of the residence cost. So this is something that, that I feel a responsibility for in spite of that ordinance. So this is something that, that I feel a responsibility for in spite of that ordinance.
Any other questions or concerns on this subject?
Uh, I got a quick question for Jeff. Um, I'm just wondering, so, um, you have where you can, um, when you go in, cut down weeds and stuff in the summertime for like people that don't cut their grass. Is, is there a same thing for if you're not consistently like shoveling your sidewalk? Or, you know, your weeds are growing over in the summertime? Is it, can that be like the same thing or, or, or we don't have that for snow?
Well, the, um, again, the ordinance puts that responsibility on the adjacent property owner. Um, in, in, to my knowledge, there's never been enforcement by the city, um, to direct those people to fix a cracked sidewalk, uh, edge the sidewalk or even do snow removal. The snow removal that the public works does during the winter time, um, is primarily to open up routes along the highway, the major streets and around the schools. And, um, it is kind of a weird situation because once we start doing those things, then we kind of own it, right? People expect that we're going to do it everywhere all the time. And the ordinances conflict with what our operations are doing.
Do we still have the equipment to clear sidewalks, the equipment to do that?
Yes, we have two snow blowers, uh, that we use on the sidewalks.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can change that ordinance to where, you know, we have people that consistently do not cut their grass. If they're consistently not shoveling their snow, I mean, you can't even get through to their street if there's something that we can change to where, I mean, it can't.
We, we lost you, uh, sip sick, sorry.
But something that.
Uh, there are, uh, there are communities in the state of Michigan that require snow removal by the residents. And if they don't do it within a certain timeframe, the, the community hires a contractor and bills back for it. Um, I, I, that, that seems like a lot to me and it seems like a lot of administration and um, a lot of enforcement and, um, I don't know, that's a, that's a tough one for me.
Yeah, Jeff, this is, this is, this is Dave here, but it's kind of not broke. We don't need to fix it. In some, in terms of snow removal itself, other things maybe was snow removal, we're doing pretty good. If we change an ordinance, you got what, like one third of our population is seasonally occupied? Not even here in the winter and that doesn't make sense to put the owners going to punish them for being gone. My thoughts.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I, I don't think the shoveling the sidewalks is the bigger issue. I, I think it's, it's the condition of the sidewalks in some areas. I, I'm glad that I don't own some of the properties because I wouldn't know how you could, you could shovel it or even put a snow blower across it because of the condition underneath. And I get it, it's the homeowner's responsibility. I, I really bring this up is to get some visibility on the issue out to the community. So community knows that they have some responsibilities too. Uh, and not, the, you know, again, I think Jeff, the, the work that you're doing on at least cutting down the trip hazards, uh, is important. And I would encourage the city to continue to do that and maybe put some more money into some, you know, repairs of sidewalks where we can. Uh, I think it's important. Uh, I know that for development, uh, walkability is, is, uh, a scoring feature. And, uh, um, there are areas, like I said, uh, not just purely conditioned, but other things, habits that people have, like I said, like plowing onto the sidewalk or, or parking things permanently on the sidewalks. Those are the kinds of things that I think need to be addressed. And, and I don't want to burden the police department with going out and writing a bunch of summonses, but uh, at least, uh, some, uh, community awareness, I think would certainly go a long way. Especially when it comes to the private plow people who are the ones I'm sure who are pushing the snow and mounting it up onto the sidewalks. Uh, they should know better.
Yeah, and we, uh, on a, it happens every winter, but um, when that stuff happens and we see it and, and a lot of, you know, the plow drivers will report that. But we work with the police department and, and try to, try to make contact with them and awareness that, you know, really you shouldn't be putting snow on the, or can't be putting snow on the sidewalks. Um, and especially pushing snow across the roads, that's a state law. And, um, that stuff becomes very hazardous to the, in, in destructive to our equipment. So, you know, there's, there's some of that we do. Obviously we don't see it everywhere that you might see it. But whenever we do see an issue, we're working with Josh's department to try to get conformance on those.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question or a comment. Would it be possible to come up with a way that if people, if I want to contribute to repairing my sidewalk or replacing it? Uh, is there a way that the city could help out or is there something we could do to have shared expense? Maybe we would get more done, um, that way, uh, the city money would go further. Um, sidewalks will get replaced.
One thing that, that I've pledged and done, uh, in several instances is the city will come and do the removals. Um, you know, if, if, um, if somebody wanted to do, uh, a sidewalk upgrade in a location that isn't programmed where we're going to come through in the, in the near future, you know, it's pretty easy for us to go do the removals and dispose of that concrete. Um, if the homeowner wanted to pay for the, the installation of the new concrete.
So Mayor, what, what I can do is Jeff and I can meet and just talk about possible options to, to, you know, solve, try to solve this problem. Then we'll come back with some recommendations, council.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Does council members have any other, I guess we're done with that. Council members have anything other they'd like to talk about this evening? Oh, I'm sorry, we got one other thing. Mr. Taylor, you have something.
There was nothing else on the agenda.
Okay. I just didn't know if you wanted to talk about budget priorities tonight or not.
No, we, we have that for our next council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Um, anybody else have anything? Council members, do you have anything else you want to talk about tonight?
No.
Hearing none. We're adjourned.
Have a good evening, everyone.